You may want to just have a seat.
All right. Okay. I call to order the city council meeting tonight is Wednesday, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-three. All members of the council are present. We're also joined by Mayor Burton, various members of his staff were joined by the council office, various members of the public. And the first item of business tonight is going to be a special recognition of members of the West Jordan Police Department. I assume we're turning this over to Chief Valentine.
This is the first time I've feared.
It's gonna be the button on the right.
All right, there we go. This is the first time I've appeared before the council felt underdressed. Where'd the crown go? Oh, no, 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 I. Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. No, but thank you for the, thank you for the offer. I'm excited. We have, so we'll, we will do badge pinings on two officers and badge pinning on one officer who's being, has been promoted to the rank of sergeant and then we'll have some others. In January, there were a couple who, who are ready to have their badges pinned, but who are out of town for family events related to the holidays. And then we've got a couple more getting out of the police academy later this month, so the time will be good and you'll get to see blue again, our favorite color. So with that, I'd like to invite up the officers who will be pinned tonight, Officer Talon Callahan. And his badge will be pinned by Deputy Chief Bell, Officer Sadie Timmerich. And she'll be pinned by her husband and Sergeant Eric Taylor, our newest sergeant. I'm assuming your wife. Yes, I didn't get to talk to her about, you get extra points if you draw blood. You do not, but she does. It's a, it's a thing.
Chief, if I may, real quick.
Please.
Those families that are here, this is your time. This is your event. Please feel free to take all the pictures you want. If you'd like to stand up, come in the aisle. If you'd like to stand up, come up close to get a good picture. Don't feel like you have to sit in your seat. Please get up, get a good picture, take some video. This is your time. Thank you.
Now, the council is aware, but I'll, just for the benefit of the rest of you here, these officers have already been sworn in. That is, they've taken an oath to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Utah, the laws and ordinances of the State of Utah and of West Jordan City. They do that before they go out onto the road, so that that we think that's very important to take that oath and to make that commitment to you as members of the community. So we do that the minute they finish the police academy and go out onto the road, but tonight they officially get their badges and this is kind of it. Now we can say we're real, actual, live West Jordan Police officers and that's way cool. So with that, pin away. I'm not hearing anyone say ouch. You can also tell the veteran officers, because they are the ones who, when they go into Denny's or some other place, they'll walk out with a coffee stirrer. Does anybody know why? Because if you put a little piece of coffee stirrer on the back of your badge, it doesn't slip down and hit your pocket when you're going for your pen and you don't catch your finger on it. There you go. You've now actually learned, you knew that already, Sergeant Taylor. You didn't? Okay, well, I've got coffee stirs in my drawer upstairs. So council members, by way of introduction, turn around, meet the council.
We'd like to get a quick picture with, with all of them. All right. It's always a pleasure to welcome, welcome those who serve the public safety. You are very much welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting. However, if you would like to, you're welcome to take, you're welcome to head out now as well, too. We will proceed with the agenda to public comment. This is a chance for residents to share anything that happens to be on their mind, whether on the agenda or not. You can have up to three minutes to address the council. Typically, we just listen. We're not here to engage in back and forth during citizen comment. We're here to let you comment and we listen. Both whether online or in person, however you're participating tonight, you're welcome to speak. For those who are online, if you would, please hit the little button at the bottom of the screen to raise hand to indicate that you'd like to speak. We'll get to those who are online that would like to speak here in just a moment. We'll start with those that are here in person, beginning with former council member, former mayor Kim Rolfe. Mr. Rolfe, if you would, please share your name and city of residence and then we'll start the three minutes.
Chairman, I request, and I don't know if you do this anymore, but five minutes because I'm representing five different businesses here tonight.
If you're speaking on behalf of a group and representing the group and the spokesman for that group, you are absolutely allowed to go five minutes. So we will go five minutes instead of three.
Thank you. First, let me thank you all for your service. It seems like I've sat in those seats for a million hours myself, so I know that it's a thankless job most of the time. So thank you for your service. And first, I'd like to state that we have the greatest public utilities engineers in this state. Greg Davenport. Both David, David Murphy and David Cottle and Angelica, they're the greatest. I want you to know that. And I'm speaking as a licensed general engineer with forty-seven years of experience in the field. So I'm retired now, but I still own a few businesses here. So that's why I'm here to speak tonight. I'd also like to state that our police officers are number one in this city. I engage with them often and I know that one officer was probably very frustrated at me last night on thirteenth West because I was beyond frustrated. So I apologize to that officer and I still believe and I support all the officers in West Jordan City. Now, I don't want to complain. I, I just, I'm here to give you facts as I see them and I hope you can see them from my perspective and the other businesses in the Greenwood Industrial Park and several residents that have expressed their frustration to me along thirteen hundred West as well. I have not seen a construction project, pipeline, construction project similar to this since Knife River on Seventy South. It's that bad. And you know how that turned out. We're still repairing their mess. Last night, I tried to get to my shop on thirteen hundred West. We're at eight one twenty South fourteen oh one West, the Otis Block. Not because of the contractor just working for Dominion, but because another contractor had knocked down the power line. But because, and what I want to talk about, because of what's been allowed to happen on thirteen hundred West through the last calendar year. It was an emergency situation. Luckily, to my knowledge, no one was injured and we didn't need emergency vehicles in there. But that, had I had a heart attack inside there, nobody could have got to me last night on thirteen hundred West. And that comes back to what I'm talking about. To have twenty-five hundred feet, a half a mile of that road disturbed all at one time is ridiculous. And I talked to, and he was very professional, Jamie Davidson today. He filled me in that the permit goes to the twenty-second of December, which is way past the time that you can get sixty-four thirty-four asphalt. Probably none of you know what that is, but way past the time that you can get states, city spec asphalt. So I don't know why I want, I'm still asking for the person that approved that permit. But what I care about is when they start up next year, after they have this winter shutdown, and I applaud whoever made that decision to shut them down this winter, because it didn't happen last year until spring, but when they come back. I would request that you address the staff to allow them only four to five hundred feet of disturbance at a time on thirteen hundred West. Anyway, I stated my opinion and I hope that it'll, I, I love working for West Jordan. It was fourteen years that I was unable to work for West Jordan. I've done over a hundred million dollars worth of work in this city in forty-seven years and it's a great city to work for. And just like I stated before, the the engineering department that's over the public utilities is top of the line. And I've worked in almost every city in this state, so I think I'm a pretty good representative. So thank you for your time and I, I just, I hope it's constructive, what I've stated. I didn't want to come here and complain. I wanted you guys to look at it. Some of you won't be sitting in these seats, I realize that, but I still would invite you to drive down thirteen hundred West in the next couple of days and see what it is. And I've lost thousands, thousands along there because of what's done. And I'm reluctant to complain about public utility workers, but I couldn't hold back. So thank you for listening. I appreciate it. I'll see you.
Thank you for your comments. Again, typically, we don't engage in back and forth here, but you may find it of interest. A couple of weeks ago at a council meeting, we had some discussions with Mr. Clegg and Mr. Davenport brought up some ideas for potential modifications to the fee schedule for those longer term projects. And that's slated for a work session early part of next year. Mr. Anderson, could you make sure that Mr. Rolfe is contacted as that agenda gets finalized? Because I think the comment he brought up about length for the permit for the work area would also dovetail nicely into that conversation. Thank you. All right. Who else would like to address the city council this evening?
Your teacher gives you extra credit for if you come up and acknowledge.
All right. Well, I'm not seeing any hands raised online. We don't have anybody called in by phone and I'm not seeing anybody else in chambers make a dash for the podium. So we will close citizen comments and proceed with the meeting with reports to the council. We will start with reports from the council members as to the various duties they performed over the last couple of weeks since we met last, starting with Councilmember Green. Or sorry, Councilmember Whitelock was first and then Councilmember Green.
I just simply want to welcome all the students from West Jordan High School. And I appreciate that your teacher assigns this. You might not appreciate it, but it's really good for you to learn about your local government. That's where you can have the most effect on your life because this body up here decides the laws for the city you live in. They decide the amount of money that your property will be taxed at, the rate. So it's good to engage in your local municipal government wherever you live, but welcome, West Jordan High.
Councilmember Green.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments about last Friday night. I'm gonna steal the mayor's thunder. But for those of you that missed it, we did have First Friday. Derek, the, the fire truck was decorated better than the police cars that escorted Santa in. So you should take pride in the fact that the, the fire truck had better lights. So we'll, we'll, we'll throw that challenge out to, to, to the police department. But the activity was great. Thanks to Warren for getting the youth council involved in that. We had a couple of, two or three members of the youth council that were helping handing out crafts to the to the, the residents. That was great that we got the, the first chance to, you know, that's the first time the youth council's been able to be involved in any sort of service project or activity. So that was great. And a special thanks to Cory and your staff. Ashley and Sherry did a great job. I didn't get a sticker. I didn't stick around and hear Thurl Bailey sing, but the, the visit with Santa, the, the drone show, the smores and the hot chocolate and everything, all turned out to be a super activity and it, based on the numbers, it was a rousing success. So thank you to your staff and mayor. Thanks to everybody. I will report that the next morning my wife had a piano recital for a bunch of her students and one of the moms came up to me and told me what a great activity that was. So, you know, when the residents come up to you unsolicited, that is, makes it even better. So thank you.
Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you. I just wanted to take a second and echo what Councilmember Whitelock said. There was recently published in the newspaper, an article where someone had done a survey of young people and it asked the question, who is the politician who has the most impact in your life? Think about that for a second. Most of the people said, well, it's the President of the United States. That's who we all care about. That's who we all vote for. But when you really understand how government works, the people who sit up in these types of meetings are the ones who decide that when you turn on the faucet, clean water comes out. When you flush the toilet, it does what toilets do. When you turn on the lights, when you drive down the roads, all of these things are critical in your life. And who are the people that make those decisions? They're the people who sit up in these types of meetings. And if you have the opportunity in your life to be able to join someone whose thoughts echo yours, you can support them in their election. You can run for office yourself. There's all kinds of things that you can do as you grow into your adult lives and make a difference in your communities, in your state, in your country. And so I just encourage you to do that and look for opportunities where you can make a difference.
Any other reports from council? All right. For those of you taking notes to send back to your civics class, fun fact, I was, I'm a graduate of West Jordan. My mom is also over at the high school over as well, Kathy McConaughey. Say hi. But yeah, please take a moment, get involved. When we hear from somebody that says, you know what, we'd like to see our tax money spent this way or that way. You saw it tonight. We didn't have many people speak. We had one person come and talk to us. So when somebody does take a moment to say, this is something I care about, you get all seven of us, plus the mayor, plus all the staff listening. You can get a lot done by sharing your two cents. So with that, let's go to the reports from the council office. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. Just to report back to the council, we have on boarded Councilmember Bennett and spent time to get him set up so he can have the same. On boarded. And he is, he's been prepared. We've updated the website, so it's got his information on there, his contact information as he's provided to us. City email, access to Prime Gov, so he has access to the agendas, the same as all of you do. So we've been appreciative and he's been very willing to come in. I've given him a small tour of temporary city hall. Second thing is with the change the Utah legislature made with the election, it's been very tight transitioning from the council members that we have now to future council members. I've already been engaging with some of them this week in preparation for their oath of office when they come into office in January. So we're continuing to do that with Councilmember-elect Lamb, Councilmember-elect Bedore and Councilmember-elect Shelton. And we'll continue to do that. We'll also have them onboarded and computers and access to all the devices by January first, when they assume office. Councilmember Green already mentioned the youth council. We're very happy with how the youth, youth council is, is turning out. Their next meeting will be on Tuesday at Public Works. And they will continue to be providing service. And trying to think if that's, I believe that's everything I've got for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. Mayor Burton, would love to hear your thoughts.
Well, thank you. So to carry on from what Councilmember Green talked about, the hitting off the holiday event, that was spectacular. Thank you, Councilmember Green for being there and Councilmember Pack, too. Also, Thurl Bailey was great. Everybody in there looked up to him. So he was great. Okay. The signs that you approved for Eli Mitchell and, well, actually it was Joshua Mitchell Way, got installed last week. So we're fortunate that everything went very smoothly there and that worked out well. The Cultural Society have, had a holiday concert over at the Sunset Ridge Middle School and that was very well attended. I was a little concerned on my way there thinking that you know, that's a big school, even though it's a middle school, but they built the auditorium and it was very well attended. And they did an excellent job. I loved their orchestra. The holiday jingle and mingle with Chamber West, that was held yesterday. That was their biggest turnout they've had yet to this. And so that was a lot of fun and I actually came back with a prize. I have a candle so I can let my light shine. And I visited Tannersville City. They had their, their holiday open house. I got to meet with their mayor and a few other people there and celebrate the holiday kicking off over in Tannersville, too. They're just a little behind us, but they caught up pretty quick. And West Jordan is holding their Holiday for Animals. That'll be December ninth from ten to two. So feel free to stop over at the Animal Services. I was gonna call it a dog pound, but that doesn't sound good. And my meet with the mayor is coming up this week. I look forward to having anybody who wants to come down and sit down and have a chat with the mayor. Come join me. I'd love to sit and talk with you. Talk to your teacher. Perhaps you'll let that count, too. And city offices will be closed the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, so I can forecast that it'll probably snow on one of those days because it always seems to snow when our city offices are closed and staff is off. But don't worry, they will come out and they'll tell the snow, even if that happens there. So if that happens, keep in mind that we have the best staff here in the city and that's why they're out there. Thank you.
Hey, isn't there cookies with the cops this week, too?
Yes. Do you remember what day that is?
I can't remember, but I think it's Saturday if I, wait, I just found it. Saturday, December sixteenth.
There we go.
At ten a.m., probably right here. So.
Yeah, a week from Saturday.
Week from Saturday. Cool.
Thank you. That's, I'm glad you caught that.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll move on to city administrator's report. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Chair. Just want to let you know the Zone Six tank that we have had under construction for some time up in the southwest corner of our city is now filled and operational and providing water into our water system. So there's still more work on the site to be done to cap and grade and landscape, recover, landscape, restoration landscaping around this construction site. But the tank is operable and water is in the system. So that's a big accomplishment and good news. So.
And we're so pumped to hear they have water in there.
It seems inappropriate to say thank you for that comment. But, but thank you. Awesome. Appreciate it, Mr. Lee. Ken, with, if that completes the reports, we will move on to our business items. So we only have three business items tonight and two of them deal with property issues. As Councilmember Bennett noted, the city government can have a really big impact on you. And this is one of those powers that needs to be used with caution. We're going to talk about eminent domain, which is where the city has the ability to potentially take property from people for specific reasons. So we have two items. We'll speak about that. And then we'll have a very short item about streetlights for crosswalks. So those are the three items that we've got today. We'll start with a resolution, discussion of Resolution twenty-three dash zero seven two. Now, this is eminent, which would authorize the use of eminent domain to acquire real property at about Ninety South and U one eleven. Who, let's see, this is Mr. Clemens, I think, or Mr. Davidson or tag team with both of you?
Yes, Mr. Clemens as well. Good evening, members of the city council, council chair. We're here this evening on two specific matters relative to the potential use of eminent domain. This process and the resolutions that we have for you, in fact, trigger the beginning of a process, but obviously do not at this time formulate a decision on the city's part to exercise and use eminent domain. But per state law, we have an obligation to obviously initiate a process, notify property owners and engage in good faith with those that we are working to acquire the property with. This particular resolution relates to property that is along the future Ninety South corridor. As you know, we are engaged in a project and to expand Ninety South from sixty-four hundred West to U one eleven, the Bacchus Highway. And we are doing that based on, in cooperation with Utah Department of Transportation. And we have state funding to proceed forward with this project. We have worked with all the property owners along the right of way and have been able to work out acquisition of right of way with the exception of one property owner. And that relates to this particular action this evening. The, the council, request for council action report notes a need for approximately one acre of property on the south side of the future Ninety South corridor to include as part of this road right of way. Negotiations have taken place with the property owner. We have completed an appraisal and Mr. Clemens, our property administrator, has had multiple conversations with the property owner in question, but unfortunately, to this point, has not been able to finalize a sale of this property necessary for a road that was identified as part of our two thousand and fifteen master transportation plan. So this, as you know, transportation and specifically east-west transportation in the city is of major concern in the community. And as a result, this road is one of the key pieces of future east-west coordination and transportation in the community. We also have a commitment that we have made to the Utah Department of Transportation in using these state dollars to have the road complete by date specific in two thousand and twenty-five. And hence that is what in large degree is necessitating us to proceed in an expeditious way to getting this, moving this action forward because we have a responsibility per an agreement we entered into with UDOT to construct this road and to get pavement laid down and, and to ensure that we meet the tenants of those agree, of that agreement, we have this responsibility to move forward with the road. I'm happy to turn the time over to Mr. Clemens, who can share with you some of the, or answer some of the questions you may have as he is better versed. as he is better versed to do that than I am. But if you have any questions at this point, I will be more than happy to entertain them.
So questions from the council? We'll start with Councilmember Green.
So this is a precursor so that Mr. Clemens can answer this question. Tonight at 5:53 PM at Council Comments, we got an email from the property owner. So what I'd like to do without objection would be to have that email admitted as part of the record and then have Mr. Clemens, he's already read it, address the applicant requested that we hold off on this for 30 days. So I'd like Mr. Clemens to address that.
Thank you.
Mr. Clemens?
So are we okay to admit that email?
Is there any objection from the council? I have, I've not read the email as noted by Councilmember Green. It came in seven minutes before the meeting started, so I'm sure most of us haven't read it. But by law, the owner of the effective property does have the right to address the council. And real quick, while we're on that point, are they here in person?
I think that's why he sent the email.
I, I know, but I wanted to just make, make sure in case. So it doesn't appear that the owner's here in person. I'm looking at the list of folks who are attending online. I don't believe the owner is online, but if you are online and I'm just not recognizing the name, please hit the button to raise your hand so that we can call on you and give you an opportunity to speak. In addition to that though, it would be, I didn't see any objection from the council to admitting that email as part of the record for tonight.
I, I object. I've read the email. I don't have a problem with the email, but the process of sending an email to the council five minutes before the council meeting, I feel is inappropriate. I agree. I, I would prefer for the property owner to have either sent it at an earlier time so that it could go through the proper vetting process or for it to be included at a later date to be able to be part of the process.
So given that there's an objection, Mr. Anderson, would it be appropriate to take a vote of the council as to whether that's admitted?
Yeah, you can take a procedural vote.
All right. All in favor of admitting the email?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries six, one. All right, Mr. Clemens?
What was the question? No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
So real, real quick though, clarification for those who are here who might not be used to this. The question is, we have this piece of property that is on the plan for a road in the future. The property owner is hesitant to sell it to the city. The city has power from the states where we can take that property and give them fair market value in exchange. The question is, should the council proceed down the road?
No pun intended. But that, that's what the question is. So Mr. Clemens, please elaborate.
Yeah, thank you. So to answer the email, I kind of have to back up a little bit to give a little context. But I feel a little bit awkward doing so because the property owner isn't here to, I'm going to put words in his mouth by doing so and I don't, that's almost not fair. But the conversation to date has been that he is a willing seller, subject to that parcel, his remainder parcel receiving adequate access, at least according to his opinion, which is that it should have full range of access right and left, in and out of his property. The problem with that is that UDOT will own this road in the end. And the property owner is asking the city to contractually guarantee a full turn radius in and out of that property, which we, as a, as an entity, turning the property over to UDOT, the road over to UDOT, we don't have the ability to contractually obligate UDOT to that access point. The reason that's important is context and background is because his email, which was just, as you noted, submitted not long ago, he's requesting a postponement of 30 days of this council decision. Because he thinks the, in my reading of his email, his email says that if we go forward with the eminent domain action, we're going to lock in the legal description. Legal description is the, the property boundary we want to acquire. And we're going to lock into escrow funds and proceeds that we would pay him per the appraisal. And that would not allow him to develop in the manner that his buyer, he's representing that he has a potential buyer, which is Holiday Oil. It wouldn't allow him to sell the property to the buyer in a way that would make it in the best, his, his best interest because the buyer, to put a Holiday Oil there, would probably have to dedicate additional land. So it's hard for me to interpret exactly what he's saying because he's not here to, to help provide that interpretation. But my interpretation is really that he wants our project to absorb additional decelerating lanes to make it usable for Holiday Oil and thereby expand our legal description and thereby expand our purchase price to pay for the excess land. That's what I'm interpreting the email to say. My recommendation would be one of two. Just a flat denial, say we're not going to do that. The city's objective here is to build a master transportation plan road. That, that's, that's it. And legally, we're only allowed to build and condemn what is required to build that facility. And the master transportation plan road and the utilities underneath have already been designed to the, to the minimum standard that we need, meaning the least amount of injury to the property owner. And so my one recommendation would be, or one option would be that we move forward with the eminent domain action, or at least the vote. Now, a second option could be, and this is where you would need to change your motion, so to speak, is that the council certainly could give us the authority to continue moving forward on the negotiation and not file the eminent domain action for some period of time, maybe even up to 30 days, while we continue to work with the property owner. But I don't see that solving the property owner's concern because the way I read that email, he's asking us to buy more property than we need for our project. And most of the developers are required, meaning in this case it would be Holiday Oil, they were required to have their own skin in the game by dedicating the extra decelerating lane to accommodate their project. The problem with the property owner's request is that it's speculative at best. They're asking us to speculate. Well, they're asking us to postpone our vote so he can speculate with a potential developer that may never happen. And even if in the next 30 days that the property buyer, Holiday Oil decided, gee, I would like to buy this property, we still don't know how much property would be necessary for a decelerating lane until he does a design. We, some of these properties are bought a year, two years, three years in advance and put into a queue to be developed at some point in the future. So the difficulty with the request, I'm sympathetic to the property owner, I really am. In fact, if I were the property owner, probably would be asking the same question. So good on him for doing his due diligence. But in reality, for the city's project, I don't think, based on the agreements, the city has already signed with UDOT with the deadlines and the date certain that Mr. Jamie Davidson mentions. Sorry about that. I don't think we have the latitude to provide that speculation window. Does that, does that make sense? Or?
It does. Councilmember Whitlock?
I don't know if you're the person to answer, but I know we have at least one engineer back there. Maybe he'll know. I, just looking at this, these little bump outs or bump ins?
Yes.
Are those places that UDOT has said they'll allow an ingress egress? Or what are those representing? Like do that UDOT is okay with? So they do have an intersection, a potential one in their property, correct? When I look at this, they do have an ingress egress, right?
That, that's correct.
Okay, okay. And when I look at this, even after we, we take that, that acre, there's still plenty of room to put a service station there, correct?
Yes, there's enough room for a service station and other development because there's still like four acres left over. And the service station usually is around an acre and a half or so.
Okay. And if, and then this probably goes back to you, thank you. Just because we vote to give the city the authority to use eminent domain does not mean that you have to do that. Like tomorrow, you could get together with the property owner, he could call in and you could go ahead and we could purchase the property without proceeding, correct?
Yeah, that's a great point. In fact, that's what we recommend. What we're asking for tonight is your, well.
You're just getting your authority to give you that ability.
If we reach an impasse. Yeah, yeah, we're really looking for the authority to, to know, well, or the assurance to know that you're supportive of the project if we do reach a definite impasse.
I am supportive of east-west traffic. Thank you.
All right. And kind of going along with what Councilmember Whitlock was saying, within the ordinance or within the resolution itself, it gives direction to staff to acquire title to the property by negotiating a price. And then it has a clause after, or by eminent domain proceedings in accordance with laws. So it, it says, yes, we want this. And then if you have to go that route, then you're authorized to do so. But there's not a mandate that they must go that route.
Exactly. Look, the city doesn't want to. When I say the city, I, I would, I don't want to speak for the council. I would assume the council, but, but certainly staff, city administration, the city attorney's office. Nobody wants to go through the eminent domain process. It's not, it's, it's time consuming, it's costly. We want to do what's best in the best interest of all parties, but that's got to be reasonable. And the, the law defines what is reasonable for the city. We have to, we follow very clear federal and state rules and laws. The property owner has a little more ability to, I guess, negotiate than we do. So yeah, the, the, the question is, are you, are you supportive of the action? Because if, if, if the answer is no, that just changes our negotiation and, and the acquisition process, I suppose.
All right. Any other questions from the council? Okay, again, just being as want, the use of eminent domain is not something that should be taken lightly. So just again, to offer one last opportunity. I did see one other person dial in online. If you are the property owner for this parcel and would like to speak to the council, please hit the little button to raise hand online. Or if you're here in chambers, feel free to come up to the microphone. Okay, I do not see the property owner. Okay, oh, I, there we go. Gary McDougal, yes, he is online. Just a moment here. All right. Mr. McDougal, let me hit the button to allow you to speak. And let's see, if you could, please introduce yourself briefly. And then we can give you three minutes, up to three minutes to address the council. Let's see. It sounds like there's a recording playing in the background. We're not able to hear you clearly. That may have been chambers and not on Zoom though. All right, I see a microphone moving. However, we're not going to do in chambers. Does somebody have contact information? I'm wondering if we can get Mr. McDougal on a cell phone and just hold the phone up to a microphone. Mr. McDougal, thank you for your patience. Mr. Clemens, Mr. McDougal, Mr. Clemens here is pulling up your contact. Yeah, he's, he's connected electronically, but the audio doesn't appear to be working. Actually, we, we could try, we could try using the call-in number. Warren, could you, or whoever's driving the slides, could you jump over to the call-in information on the slides? If we back up the slides to the citizen comment, it should. So Warren, with the, with the slides? Could you reach over to the computer and back us up? There we go. All right, Mr. McDougal, since we're having a hard time hearing you through the computer. Here's the phone number to call. It's, yeah, let me, let me disable that again. So Mr. McDougal, if you would, please call in. You can call numbers up on the screen or it's 346-248-7799. And then the meeting number and password are at the bottom of the screen. So again, the phone number to call in is 346-248-7799. And then when it asks for a meeting number, that meeting number is 869-7287-8221. The meeting code will be 8,000. Again, that's media, the webinar ID is 869-7287-8221. While we watch for this one here, in the interest of time, I'm wondering if we hold on here until we're able to get Mr. McDougal on the phone and proceed to the next, next item on the agenda. Is there any objection from the council if we come back to this without any action right now? Okay, I'm not seeing any objection. We'll work with Mr. McDougal to try and get him online. And the next one is similar. This is another location, this time at 5851 West 7800 South. Similar situation, but different property owner.
Yes, council members and Council Chair McConaughey, this is precisely what our council chair was talking about. It is a similar circumstance as the 90th South request and proposed resolution. This specifically relates to a specific section of 7800 South, also a east-west connector within the city. The city is anxious to move forward in the expansion of the roadway at approximately 5851 West and to shift that road from a three-lane section to a five-lane section. The property in question that is identified in blue on your screen is under the ownership of Rocky Mountain Power. And we have engaged Rocky Mountain, we have attempted to engage Rocky Mountain Power for several months. And unfortunately have had, not had any sort of written response from Rocky Mountain Power. Mr. Clemens can speak to his efforts to engage Rocky Mountain. But time is of the essence as related to this project because we have made commitments to the residents of the community that we will move forward in an expeditious way in working through the widening of 7800 South. In advance of the widening project, it's necessary for us to upgrade a sewer line that runs in that specific section of the roadway as well. So as a precursor to the road project next spring, we actually need to go in now, or not necessarily now, but before the roadway construction and install an upsized sewer line. And that is in part what is driving kind of the expediency or the need to move forward with this project sooner rather than later. We have made several attempts or multiple attempts to contact Rocky Mountain Power and to negotiate with them. They have represented that they are willing to talk, but they also have represented that they are wanting specific consideration by way of special easements and such that we do not believe are in the best interest of the city. And hence we have represented to them that it is our intent to move forward with you as it relates to consideration of an eminent domain action. Again, Mr. Clemens can speak to the specifics of his negotiations and his efforts in relation to Rocky Mountain Power. But again, this road project is a key part of our east-west transportation program and transportation plan that was adopted back in 2015. And as anybody who drives this road during AM or PM peak, you immediately understand and appreciate the need for the expansion and widening of this section of roadway. So if it's okay with the council, I'll turn the time over to Mr. Clemens to just add anything that he'd like to relative to this resolution.
Mr. Clemens, anything to add?
Well, only to say that Jamie Davidson is right that we have spent a considerable amount of time. I think the first offer to property owner went out. Uh, that uh we have spent a considerable amount of time. I think the first offer to property owner went out. Uh, mid-September, here we are in December and we just haven't had any luck. We've had verbal responses, but nothing substantial in uh in writing. So. Uh, uh, not only that, again, I, this resolution is patterned after the one on Ninetieth in that. The city would prefer to to have a reasonably uh, a reasonable settlement. Or negotiated settlement with with the property owner. We're not advocating that we just want to file a complaint tomorrow or the next week or even the next week. We'd like to just find out what the level of support is here from the council. Get your vote. That'll tell us what that level of support is, and then that tells me. Uh, how to have, to continue my discussions with Rocky Mountain Power until we reach either a settlement or an impasse, and then we'll know where to go from there.
Any questions from the council? Councilmember Green?
I was gonna make a motion.
Go for it. I move. But, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Just a second. I I forgot. We need to give the property owner an opportunity to speak to that one. So if you are representative. From Rocky Mountain Power and you are online, please hit the button to raise hand to indicate if you'd like to speak. If you're here in person representing Rocky Mountain Power, uh, would invite you to come to the diet or to the podium if you'd like to speak. Give it just a moment or two. I'm not seeing any representation from Rocky Mountain Power. Therefore, I will turn back to Councilmember Green for a motion.
I am going to move to approve Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero seven one. Authorizing the use of eminent domain to acquire real property located on or about fifty-eight, fifty-one, West Seventy-eight Hundred. South, West Jordan, Utah.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Whitlock. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember Jacob, then Councilmember Pack.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I just wanted to. I wholeheartedly support this, of course. Um, I can say over the last six months of I, as I've had a lot of conversations with a lot of residents. Out in this west part of the city, um, this is the number one, number one issue. How dare you build another house without widening Seventy-Eight Hundred South? So, uh, anything we can do to move this forward faster. I'm wholeheartedly in support of, and and again, it's not the heavy hand of government. It's just a tool in the toolbox to move things forward. So. All in favor.
Councilmember Pack. Great, thank you, Chair. As referenced earlier, definitely want to ensure. Extreme caution and due diligence when dealing with property owners' rights. It seems like a good faith effort has been extended more than once. And and this just allows for another avenue to be able to facilitate the building. Of necessary infrastructure to accommodate the expansion of the the west side. Um, so I'll be voting in support of it. Thank you.
Councilmember Green, then Councilmember Bloom.
Couple of things. I normally hate using the use of eminent domain for anything because it is a draconian measure. Uh, for those of you that are the high school, hear from the high school. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna go back to the Constitution. This is actually the Fifth Amendment to the Constitution in action. Where the Constitution prohibits us taking uh without ta- with, by taking property with uh. Due process and appropriate compensation. So, um, a lot of times. People will be elected to a city council and they say, well, geez, I never deal with constitutional issues. Well, tonight, we're dealing with a fundamental constitutional issue. It's number five. Uh, and so just wanted to point that out. I do hate using eminent domain. But in this one, I a hundred percent agree. We gotta get that road fixed. Um, and 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 without it, it, it's gonna make a mess on the west side. So, thank you.
Councilmember Bloom.
Um, echoing what everybody else has said, and as someone who like Councilmember Jacob lives there and drives that road every single day. Has had a hit-and-run accident, has seen accidents have, I, I trust and I'm excited for the staff that we have. To move forward in the best possible way, and thank you for bringing this to us, and I look forward to that getting done.
All right, not seeing any additional discussion to the motion. Um. I think I'll chime in real quick, though. Uh, this one's a little bit interesting because it's another, it's sort of a quasi-governmental entity. That holds the property. So i- it's a little bit different than the first one that we talked about. Um, the other thing is with this, as mentioned, it's for, it's needed not just for transportation, but also for sewer, which is public health. Uh, while I was at West Jordan, uh, we lost half of the school to Copper Hills because Copper Hills opened up while I was there. So I'm very sympathetic to the folks who go to Copper Hills and who are in the area that feels like family just about. So. I'm very much in favor of proceeding to make sure that we can take care of public health, public transportation, and the other issues that uh this necessary infrastructure. Would facilitate. So with that, let's look to Ms. Quick for a vote.
Councilmember Worden.
Would be, you mean Bennett.
This should be Bennett. Excuse me, Councilmember Bennett.
Mic- microphone, please.
Councilmember Pat.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
And Chair McConaughey.
Hi.
Thank you so much and passes seven to zero.
All right, let's move back now to Resolution Twenty-three dash zero seven two, which was item A. This takes us back to Ninetieth South and U one eleven. Mr. McDougal looks to be connected by phone. So let me hit the button to allow to talk. I, can you remember, remind me, there we go. If you would click, uh, push star six, that should enable you to speak.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can this time. Thank you for, thank you for, we'd, we'd love to hear.
Okay, uh, just with regards to this parcel, my family owns this five-acre parcel. And and we appreciate how courteous staff's been when they contacted us. Dave Clemens and Alan Anderson were really helpful. I'm happy to report that Holiday Oil is committed to purchase this corner for a future gas station. On Monday of this meet, week, we met with West Jordan, uh, Mark Forsyth in a pre-application review with West Jordan City. There were ten people in attendance, Mark Forsyth, Todd from West Jordan Engineering, Nestor from West Jordan Traffic. Paul Brockbank, West Jordan Fire, David Murphy, West Jordan Utilities, and two representatives from Holiday Oil. Holiday Oil made a commitment to the gas station on the corner of Ninetieth and U one eleven, and they were willing to submit a concept. Plan as soon as possible. Prior to our meeting, I had spoken with Mayor Burton, and he was really gracious, and he helped me out, and and he actually spoke to UDOT about this access. At that time, I couldn't disclose the tenant or the specific needs, but once they attended this pre-application meeting, that was fine. Uh, UDOT didn't have all of the facts. They weren't thrilled about it and had any changes. And they could still deny this Holiday Oil. Uh, in our pre-application meeting, it was encouraging that Holiday Oil was working with West Jordan on other sites. And they were well acquainted with with the staff, and between Holiday Oil and the staff, they were diligently looking for solutions. Holiday feels like they need a second access, just a write-in only for their fuel trucks. They don't need to do ride-out. They don't have to do anything. Other than write-in. It was suggested that on U N eleven, if they're going to do a deceleration lane to turn east on the Ninetieth. It might be possible to contribute more ground uh for a ride-in only. We could put a median in uh to the Holiday Oil and and. It might also alleviate stacking on U one eleven for people turning right. A second alternative was discussed, uh, was a write-in on Ninetieth South. Uh, ag- again, if we need a little more ground, we can do that. Uh, I realize that West Jordan has every right to condemn. There's no question that that's the case. I just want to make sure we get enough ground or we do it right. And if you go ahead with the condemnation, it's gonna lock in the legal description. You're gonna escrow funds and. I don't know if that makes it more difficult or not to modify that, but we've been working with this. Mayor Burton was really helpful. David Clemens, Mark Forsyth been helpful, and I can give you my, my word, my word that we'll quickly move as fast as we can. I just want you to consider that maybe it'd be worth tabling this because we are moving. And uh, we've been to the pre-application meetings, but that's all I would suggest is maybe it's worth. Just continuing to work with it. Uh, once you file the condemnation, you know, it starts things in motion. So, uh, I don't know, but but it seems like it'd be worth thirty days. I think Holiday Oil can make this work, and it's a good retail site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Um, does anybody have any questions for Mr. McDougal? I'm not seeing any, any lights from the council, so thank you very much. I'm going to put you back on mute. However, uh, we will keep you there just in case something does come up and we need to uh bring your audio back again. All right. We'll turn to the council for discussion or a motion. Councilmember Green.
I'm trying to figure out how to word this, word this motion, so. Bear with me. I am going to, and the, and if I need to clarify it, we can. I'm going to move that West Jordan City Council approve. Resolution Number Twenty-three dash zero seven two, authorizing the use of eminent domain. To acquire the real property at ninety oh one, South U one eleven Highway, West Jordan, Utah. Noting that. We would want a thirty-day grace period before we initiate eminent domain. To allow appropriate negotiations. Does that wording sound okay to you? Um.
Second for discussion. Mr. Chandler.
Can I just offer a suggestion on that? Uh, perhaps instead of using the language initiating eminent domain. We might consider using language like filing uh the the proceedings in court. Initiating litigation for eminent domain, just so that there's not any confusion that this step isn't the actual step. We do want to make sure that this is the correct procedural step that we're taking tonight.
So just to modify that to say initiate a eminent domain filing?
Sure. Yeah, I, I think that's better.
No sooner, no, no, no sooner than thirty days? Would that be appropriate?
Yeah, I don't see why not.
Okay.
Could you restate the motion for Ms. Quick?
Cindy, I'm going to move to approve Resolution Twenty-three dash zero seven two, authorizing the the stuff you see on the screen. With the, with the eminent domain. Filing to be no sooner than thirty days. From today.
So that's motion by Councilmember Green, and then second still stands second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember Whitlock.
As was stated on the other one, eminent domain isn't something that I would ever take lightly. Um. But there are times that I'm glad that it is a tool that can be used. And in this case, I hope that the property owner um. And the city can come to terms, but ultimately. I only see us needing that acre. I, I, I can understand why having a write-in right, right. Either from U one eleven or nine thousand would be great, but those are both, well, one is a state road currently, and the other one will be real soon. So that really isn't under our authority. I wish, believe me, I wish on nine thousand south, we had a whole lot more authority in the city. Um, it would be very helpful in many ways, but we don't. So because of that, I'm, I support this. We need to do all that we can to help our residents travel east-west in the city in. Anyway that we can.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, and a much similar note, I just wanted to say that the uh. The business of the city is not to plan around whether Holiday Oil builds a gas station. This is a road that needs to be built, and all we can do is acquire the land to build the road. Uh, and if this is the tool that we need to employ in this case, which it doesn't really sound like it's gonna need to be filed. The property owner sounds amenable to the discussion. So. This is, this is kind of a last resort, but it's a last resort. We need to have the tool in the toolbox. So, um, I'll, I'll be in favor of the motion. Uh, this evening, I think, um. I, yeah, all, all we're in the business of is is just building a road. We're not in the business of negotiating with Holiday Oil, at least not yet, right? I mean, down the line, when they apply for site plans and things like that, we can, we can cross that bridge, but right now, all, all we're talking about is a road. And if I, the other thing I heard along with Seventy-eight Hundred South is fix east-west traffic, and here we're planning ahead. So that we don't have to fix it in twenty years when this area is built out. It's fixed in advance. It's what we should have done on Seventy-eight Hundred South is what we're doing now. So, this is great. Thank you.
Councilmember Green, then I'll chime in.
I was gonna ask Councilmember Breakit, Jacob. I didn't know there was a bridge here. Um, sorry, I couldn't, boy, I, you talked about a bridge. Um. I, I think what this, and and like I said before, I don't like eminent domain, particularly when it's a, when it's private person's property. Um, but I do think that we have to fix the east-west. Um, I think that by giving, by, by. Approving this, but then giving everybody thirty days, I think that gives everybody a chance to try to. Come to a reasonable solution before we throw up our hands and say, no, we gotta do eminent domain. So. I'm, uh, what I'm hoping here is, that's why I put that thirty-day buffer in there, is so that we can. Encourage both sides to negotiate in good faith, and let's just get this done, um, so that we can get that road built because. That's an important part of, like Councilmember Jacob said, it's an important part of, and it's something that we need to do. Before we build three thousand houses in that, in that neighborhood and not wait until like what we're doing at seventy-eight. So I. Hundred percent, that's why we're gonna, that's why we need to do this.
So, I, the twelve years that I've been on the city council, there's only been a handful of times where we've exercised eminent, eminent domain. It's something that we've done very sparingly as a council. We've taken every uh, every step possible to try to avoid it. Um, however, there was one instance, not uh, not too, I guess it's a while ago now. Um, but the property owner that we are working with actually preferred to go the eminent domain route rather than selling out right to the city. Because some of the tax advantages that may be beneficial to them. So I, I think Councilmember Green's motion. Creates the, creates a very good balance between ensuring that we're able to move things forward appropriately for the city. Um, the roads not yet built there. Uh, this is something that we don't need immediately, something that we do have a little time to build on. And I think the time for the property owner to try and um, work to make sure that we get the best end product is is appropriate. I also want to thank Mr. McDougal for the continued conversations with the city. It was noted, the, the email that came in seven minutes before council meeting. Uh, we didn't all have an opportunity to, to read, but uh, I very much appreciate you staying engaged and staying involved with the city. And and again, your efforts to make sure, like, like you said, we end up with the best possible product or service for the residents that are gonna be out there. So, thank you very much, Mr. McDougal. With that, I don't see any other lights, so I would look to Ms. Quick for a vote.
Chair McConaughey.
Hi.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Whitlock.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bloom.
Yes.
Councilmember Pack.
Yes.
Councilmember Bennett.
Hi.
Councilmember Jacob.
Yes.
Thank you. I shall that motion passes seven to zero.
All right, that brings us to our third business item, which is one that we've discussed. Mildly as a council before, but we haven't gotten too far. Um, we've talked about having streetlights. At both sides of crosswalks. I've asked in the past if the council was interested in pursuing this. Council said, yes, we are. And we tried to find out if this is something that could be done administratively or if it required a change in code. We've been trying to go down the path of an administrative modification to uh lighting standards. But our staff recently found an opportunity to simplify this by making a modification to code. Um, rather than have a, a full work session on this because of timing and where this fell and with the change in council. Since we have spoken about this before, I wanted to bring this up and say, council, here's a suggestion for how we might be able to change code. Is this something that? Sorry, did?
No, I just was, I laughed and snorted, so I'm sorry.
Okay, so I wanted to find out from the council if there's a willingness to send this forward to the planning commission so that we can start the process. Um, this would go to the planning commission since it's need land use, and then it would come back to the council for ratification. Um, this also would still need to go through staff uh or through legal as well. Um, but essentially. Um, what it is, is adding two additional lines to our code for public works. Where we talk about uh the requirement of street lighting. Uh, currently, we say the developer of residential, commercial, or industrial, whatever it is. is required to install street lightings within this uh street lighting systems within the development. Um the simple proposal would be to add two lines. Number one, this was a request from staff uh or sub bullet one saying, the lighting shall meet the minimum requirements set forth in the city's adopted transportation master plan. That lets us use that point to the transportation master plan as a document that governs everything, and it makes it a little bit easier than updating code. Um every time there's a minor modification that needs to to happen, or if a developer questions something, we have a place in code that references that document for the lighting standards. And then number two, this was the one that I was most concerned about. Marked pedestrian crossings shall require street lighting at each end of the crossing. Any pedestrian refuge, so those little islands in the middle, any pedestrian refuge shall be illuminated in a manner approved by the city engineer. So in my mind, that meant the city engineer can say, yeah, the lights on the side are close enough. There's light being provided there. That's good. Or you know what? Maybe it needs something in the middle. It gives a little bit of flexibility. Uh the reason I wanted to do this is just north of where my mother lives on Halloween a few years ago, we had a child who was hit and killed by a vehicle. Child was in a crosswalk. The driver was not speeding or doing anything illegal. They just could not see the child. The light was on the other side of the crosswalk. Everything was very well illuminated, but the opposite side was dark. The child was in a costume. Um and and we have a tragedy there. If we can make this change going forward, um I I think it will be beneficial for for the residents of the city. Um this is not mandating that we go back and change all the crosswalks that are there right now. This is just saying the developers who put it in would be held to the standard. Now, at some point in the future, as we go through the budget process, we could say, you know, we do have additional funds. We want to go back and we want to upgrade the older crosswalks. And we could prioritize them and use money as as it becomes available, but this doesn't mandate that. This just says this just suggests let's change the standard going forward, so we're not causing any more problem. So that was what I wanted to do. Um the motion that suggested if the council's in favor is to direct staff to work with the planning commission to get this on the calendar for them, so it can go through the process and eventually come back to the council. Um but I would love to hear thoughts from the council, starting with Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you, Chair. I I like the idea. I just have Mr. Chandler a legal question. If we're saying this is what's required now for future, you know, things that haven't been developed, does that do anything to us, like in the case that Chair McConaughey explained, there was a child that lost their life? Is there any way that they could come back to us and say, why didn't you, why didn't you retrofit all the intersections? You you clearly thought it was important.
So is the question, would we have potential liability based on what happened before or in a future situation?
Future.
Um. It shouldn't. Uh obviously, yeah, uh.
Yes, even you worry about those attorneys, huh? It shouldn't.
Yeah, you know, uh an enterprising plaintiff's attorney can always make an argument if they're trying hard enough to do so. Um I don't want to put us in a situation where we're trying not to do the right thing because we're worried about somebody turning it into the wrong thing. Um I don't have immediate concerns about that liability arising, but I can't guarantee that the argument wouldn't be made.
Okay, thank you. I I'm supportive.
Thank you, and and I can speak to that because that was considered as well as we were brainstorming about this. Um the most comparable situation is for cross or sorry, sidewalks where we've changed standards. As you look at some of the older areas of the city where you may have an open canal like on uh twenty-two hundred west, kind of by West Jordan Middle School, twenty-two hundred west and seventy-six hundred south, uh curb and gutter would have been required there. It's not currently there. Our standards have changed, and we wouldn't allow something like that today. Uh but um we we have not yet been able to get back and backfill that and update that. We do have a list of sidewalk deficiencies and street deficiencies that we know need to be updated, and every year we allocate a certain amount of funding and manpower to do that. Uh but my thought was that was the equivalency. This creates that deficiency list that we can start working forward and funding, so. Councilmember Bennett.
Thank you, Chair. Um I just wanted to take a moment and say this is a very well-thought-out uh discussion item. And I think that having the opportunity to potentially save lives is one of the most important things that any government official can possibly entertain. Um I don't know how many of you may have had friends or relatives or others who have had problems with cars, with accidents, but being able to say, because we make this decision, we'll be able to save lives down the road, that's making a difference. And uh I just want to say thank you for the opportunity, Chair, for bringing this to the council, and I'm fully in support of it.
Councilmember Green.
May I ask one more question?
Councilmember Whitelock.
Cause something that Councilmember Bennett brought up. With it, will UDOT be held to the standard? Because it was actually on a UDOT road that my daughter got hit and the vehicle left. Will they have to?
When they submit?
They don't, they don't have to, right? Or do they?
So I don't know the answer to that off the top of my head, but we can look into it.
Well, I hope that however we draft this, we draft it, so the answer is yes.
Okay, we can take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pack.
Great, thank you, Chair. Uh yes, you know, ev- every month at our uh PTSA board meeting, we're always talking about safe walking routes or safety for students or anything in the community. It doesn't need to be a school-aged uh person. It's hard to put a price tag on safety and well-being for the community. Um but that that should be our prime concern, you know, safety, uh policing, funding any way possible to keep uh people feeling safe in the in communities, so definitely in favor of the initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacob.
And I'll just say that it's a very nice, simple, elegant solution. I think two lines of code, anytime you can pass a resolution that includes two lines of code, sounds good to me.
As much as I would like to claim credit for that, Corey Frelick is the one who found this nice, simple, elegant solution. I think we sat on this for about eight months, and then he saw this and suggested it. Um I am one hundred percent blaming the mayor's office for the delay in getting this because it took a while for him to uh get hired on at the city. Had he been hired sooner, we would have found this sooner, so thank you. Thank you, Corey. Councilmember Green.
With that, can I move that uh I move to have council office work with the mayor's office to appropriately staff refine the proposed language for the code modification requiring streetlights at the end of each marked pedestrian crossing, providing that the uh that code to the planning commission for re- recommendation and subsequent consideration by the city council for possible adoption.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember McConaughey. My discussion to the motion is, first of all, sincere thank you, thank you very much uh to the council. Um Mr. Frelick has mentioned found an elegant solution for this. However, the timing was such that we wouldn't be able to have a regular council work session where I was still on the council in order to get this done before my term expired. So thank you for the flexibility and including this in the as a business item and fast-tracking this on to the planning commission. The second thank you um would be to Buddy Alger. He is the principal over Heartland Elementary. Um for those high school students that are still here, the city tries to work pretty closely with the schools. There are uh community councils within the schools, and the mayor and council are often invited to go meet with them and talk with them. After one of these meetings, uh Buddy walked us outside in front of the school and showed us that Heartland Elementary, it's on seventy south, just east of Redwood Road. There was a light on the north side of Redwood Road, nothing on the south side. I saw this and I flashed back to the incident that we had with the child just outside of my mom's neighborhood and realized that we needed to make a change. Um it's that relationship with the school and folks stepping up and saying, hey, I've I've got an idea. I think I see a problem. People taking the opportunity to engage the elected officials who are responsible for spending your tax dollars. When you go to the store, when you buy something, even if it's on Amazon, some of those tax dollars end up here at the city, and you have an opportunity to say, here's how we'd like them spent, so. Want to say thank you to him for giving us that idea. With that, uh Ms. Quick, actually, this one's not a resolution. We can say all in favor. Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, resolution passes. That brings us on to the agenda.
I move to approve the sand items.
Second, motion by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember McConaughey. These are minutes from prior meeting, so all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No. Minutes stand approved. Counsel remarks. Oh, sorry, I couldn't see your light from here. Mayor Mayor Burton, did you want to uh?
I wanted to tag on to your comments about the crossing over the elementary school that you were talking about with the light on the one side. Due to your comments and suggestions, there are now, there's now a street light on each side of that crosswalk, so thank you for that.
Thank you. And thank you, Mayor. I should have pointed that out. Um even without waiting for something to be codified, it was appreciated to see staff just move ahead and do the right thing and try and take care of safety concerns when they were brought up. Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you, Chair. I want to take a few moments to thank those that supported me in my run for mayor and to answer a couple of questions. Of course, I'm disappointed with the outcome. I do, however, believe in our system of government. Hence, I will support and work with Mayor Burton for what is best for the city. And yes, I get to retain my council seat. I look forward to serving and to being a voice for West Jordan residents. I'm excited to have Chad come back to the council and look forward to working with both Councilmember Bedore and Shelton and getting to know them better. I would also like to clarify a couple of items. That while I'm a registered Republican, I vote for the person I feel best aligns with my thoughts and visions that's running, whether it's a Republican, a Democrat, or sometimes it's a different party. I believe the fear of some of our founding fathers was legitimate, and it worries me. They warned us that when it came to just a two-party system, it would not lead to positive outcomes for America. I have always felt that both municipal and school board elections should remain nonpartisan and have volunteered countless hours trying to keep them that way. Sadly, the state decided partisan state school board elections was a good idea. I still disagree. During the campaign cycle, I had decided that no matter who invited me to come and speak to any size group, if I was available, I would participate. It makes me sad that some felt this was wrong. Why would a candidate refuse to participate just because of group's affiliation? I I thank the Muslim community and the union as well as individual residents that invited me to come so they could ask me questions and get to know my visions and ideas. Lastly, I heard many rumors during this campaign about me that were just that rumors. I appreciate those that would reach out to and inquire if they were accurate and allow me to answer, and also in some cases, give them proof. If someone shares information about me, I ask that you not just take it as truth, but that you ask, research, and then draw your own conclusions. I love serving the city of West Jordan and its residents. If you have ideas to share or need help with an issue, please reach out. I'm available and willing to help. Lastly, I want to send a shout out to the Worthing family. Melissa, who has served on our council and her family recently moved to Colorado, has been a big proponent of our animal shelter. In fact, they were very instrumental before I joined the council in in ensuring that the the shelter got air conditioning, which was needed. Um she has volunteered countless hours and always donated during their Christmas drive for the shelter. And this year, she called and said, if I send some stuff to you, will you please get it to the shelter? So my shout out is to the Worthing family for their support of the animals in our city and the shelter. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
Just a just a quick comment, one I want to thank um because we didn't get a chance in the Board of Canvassers really. Want to thank everybody who ran. I will tell you, as somebody who had run twice in two years, and I think there's some people who who are sitting up here crazy that want to run again, but that's okay. Uh. It takes a lot to put yourself out there. And uh it's not easy. So to everybody who um if you if you think about the Constitution of the United States, voting is such a fundamental right. It is not listed in the Constitution. The only time that we've put anything in the Constitution about voting is when we amended it and allowed eighteen-year-olds to vote. Think about that. The right to vote is so fundamental that it's not in the Constitution. It's assumed that we have that right. So and and I look forward to there's two of you here. I know Bob's in Magic Kingdom, and Bob, if you're watching this, you're a lunatic, and I hope you sign off pretty dang quick.
Bob has actually been online the entire time. He joined before the meeting, and he's still online.
Okay, Bob. Chris, hang up on Bob. But uh Chad, Ken, Bob, I look forward to working with you for at least the next two years, and uh it should it should be a fun ride, so thank you.
Just for the record, Councilmember Green's comments were taken in jest. I did not expol- uh I did not kick out Mr. Bedore from a public meeting. Everyone is intended. If I was going to kick out anybody, probably be my mom who's watching me online. So just for the record, we do have about ten folks here still from West Jordan and the secretary, so. With that, there are no administrative items. I would look for.
Move to adjourn.
Most by Councilmember Green, second by Councilmember Whitelock, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Okay, Mom, you can hang up now. Love you.